Set some minutes here. I've got a meeting, minutes on June the 7th. June the 14th at 9 o'clock. Let's see, June 15th at 9 o'clock. And June 16th at 9 o'clock. And then June 17th, we didn't have a forum, but we still have a set of minutes for that. Are there any questions or comments about any of these minutes? Annette. All right, item number two is to discuss, consider, propose, pending contracts and agreements. I don't have any that were presented to me after the filing of this agenda. They are already in the agenda. Anyone else wanted our elected county official with a contract to look review today? Okay, hearing none, no action on that. Now we'll move on to one of the voter parts of the meeting. We've got discussed, consider proclamation commending Desdemona, VFD Chief Johnny Hart. And this came to me from Chief Williamson, Eastern Fire Department Chief, about a couple of weeks ago, I guess. And he outlined what Chief Hart did down at Desdemona. And so I think it's very worthy of commending his action. He saved someone's life, he took matters in his own hands and got the person back to safety. And so I've got Chief Hart in Desdemona VFD arrived to arrive. He made the decision to enter the rushing water himself to save the occupant. And whereas Chief Hart tied a rope to himself and into a fire truck, then traded the swift water to the vehicle and the female victim, at which time Chief Hart attempted to bring the victim back to safety. And whereas Chief Hart realized the water current was too strong to walk in and had the fire truck backed up to pull both the chief and victim out to safety. And whereas there should be recognition and commendation of his heroic lifesaving effort to save someone in a serious incident. Now therefore acting as Eastern County Commissioners Court is hereby proclaim that Chief Johnny Hart.
I'll make the motion.
To make this. Motion made in about three seconds. All in favor say aye. Aye as well. And I've got this one to give to Chief Hart and then I've got two more to put into our records. Margaret, you might want one, Julie, you might want one as well. I'm gonna sign these, start hanging them around. And Kathy has brought her seal, so she can go ahead and seal it and then we'll put one in the the frame here as well. Let's see, Kathy, would you come, other Kathy, sorry. Other Kathy, would you come and take this apart so we can sign this one as well, please? Thank you. Chief Williamson, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Yes, sir.
Chief Hart, anything, any words from you?
Well, I guess if I had to say anything, Librium 413 says I can do all things through he who gives me strength. And, you know, I don't think that I'm any more deserving than any other firefighters that serves Eastern County. I didn't do anything that any other person in that situation wouldn't have done at that time. And it takes a team effort from all of the fire departments and all of the firefighters involved in those. And every one of them's a hero in my books.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we sincerely appreciate your efforts to keep that part of the county safe down there. When I called him to ask him to come up to this, he was riding the main tanner for E-Ride County. He shared some of y'all's pain.
He keeps me lying down there. Tells me what I need. Fixing there, Desdemona there.
Okay, well, good. Do you live in Desdemona?
Yes, sir. I'm actually the pastor of First Baptist Church.
All right, congratulations.
That's my baby boy.
That's your baby boy? You wanna put that on the record? Margaret, Julie, y'all wanna get a photo of him, getting his recognition?
Yes, sir.
Maybe.
Good.
I don't know, I've got enough devices to do it.
Get all the paperwork down here. And Kathy L., would you make a copy of one of these to give both to Margaret and to Julie?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Let's give Chief Hart a round of applause. I'm gonna hand this to you and these ladies wanna get your photo up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chief Hart, congratulations. Yes, sir, thank you very much. Now I think soon you may have come in a little late. We're going to ask the table, the item about the worker's comp from Darin Archer, because he's going to that funeral for Ian Leaker, which starts in about 50 minutes. So can I have a motion then to table number four, which is fire departments funding their own worker's comp, Darin Archer's gonna present that? I have a motion and a second to table item number four. All in favor say aye. And opposed, same sign, and that's it, thank you. Thank you, Chief Hart.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, you bet, thank you too. Item number five is discuss and consider purchase of a new computer for JP Kirk, uh, clerk, Judge Glenn, come on in.
Yes, sir. I got a quote and I've talked to Ms. Loretta about it, she said I had the money for it. Stephanie needs a computer. It's, she's having to shut it down twice a day to get it to start back up and start working. According to Kerry, the last time it was replaced, he thinks was like 2014, 2015 timeframe. And unlike wine, computers don't get better with time.
All right, so $899 is what you're asking for, thank you.
That's the quote and then I talked to Ms. Loretta and she was thinking about 300 extra to cover any add-on installing and everything else.
So say $1,200, which should cover all of it?
That's, that was the idea.
Okay. All right, then can we have a motion to spend out of Justice Court Technology Fund, up to $1,200 for buying a computer and getting it set up for Justice Court clerk?
I'll make the motion, second.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor, say aye? Aye as well. All right, thank you. Thank you, Judge Glenn, you bet. Item number six, discuss, consider allowing election administrator Summer Alvaro to enter into electronically sign a new cop release to Rico. And I reviewed this and there's an I did not see an opt-out clause, so making a change on that. So at this time, we table item number six.
Six.
Motion made, seconded, table item number six, all in favor say aye? And opposed, same sign, and that carries. Okay, item number seven is up there on County Burn Ban. It is getting a little dry, although I picked up two tenths of inch of rain starting tonight. What do we think about the burn ban, on or off?
Put rain out this week, all this week, next week.
If you put the burn ban on, it'll sure rain.
Yeah, I don't want it to be this way.
All right, anybody wanna make a motion to put on the burn ban? Hearing none, then no action on item number seven. Item number eight is, Sheriff Wicker, come on down. Eight is discuss, consider purchase of computer aided dispatch CAD system. Eastern County Department of Dispatch Emergency Declaration.
Morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Morning.
Okay, so we had previously discussed this in the budget workshop. They had turned in a bid for eighty-something rather than I've been bringing them, sorry. And we've discussed that and there was some discussion on whether or not we needed to go out for bid. After discussing for the last couple of weeks or since that, that deal, Loretta felt that it would be good to go out for bid. And also that she didn't like, I'm asking for y'all to declare the emergency for public safety. And I'm asking y'all to take bids until the 16th. It'll be published according to all the rules and stuff till the 16th. And which bids could be opened on the 16th if y'all would agree to have a special session to open the bids on the 16th. If, if not, then it would be the 26th. And the reason we're asking to move that up is that's a couple more weeks that, you know, if we're, if we're trying to get this done before October 1, or by September 30th, I need all the help I can get on that deal. So, and I'm gonna ask that these systems be paid from fund balance, dispatch fund balance, for the CAD servers, the PCs, all that of which I turned into y'all before, I've turned into y'all again, the bids are at the back of this deal. The what I turned into y'all is the bid request and the bid notice, I've got one. The bid notice and then I came up with, Loretta and I came up with some specs for this thing. That if somebody's calling for specs, then, then we have something to give them. I turned in the, the second quote that we got from E-Force and also the, the quote from KCS on the computers. Now the, the quote from KCS on the computers, that's the same quote that I'd given y'all previously. After discussing with Loretta and Paul, this is a this would be out of fund balance, but not as part of the bid process on the servers, because they'll be used for other things as well. They won't be just used for a CAD system.
So what you're asking us to do this morning is to declare the emergency for public safety. That's, that's item number eight, and then we'll get into item number nine to talk about requesting the bids. So gentlemen, any questions or comments on him about the necessity for the CAD? We talked about that in the budget workshop, kinda to the part now that we've gotta get some wheels rolling if we're gonna do this. So do we have questions or comments about it?
I'll make the motion to declare the emergency.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to declare this computer aided dispatch purchase in emergency, public safety. All in favor, say aye? Aye as well. That is unanimous. And then also on
Thank you, gentlemen.
Sure, on number nine, we've got discuss, consider requesting bids for the purchase and installation of a CAD system. So he's told you about the bid process and trying to get the bids back in here and have them, this says submitted to auditor's office by 8:30 a.m. Friday, July 16th. So we could have the meeting that same day, but after
She's got a, oh, meeting in
Yeah, there you go. At 9:00, or at 9:00. So can we have a motion then to go out for bids for this CAD system for dispatch? Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye? Aye as well. And then finally, to pay for the new CAD system, that payment will be coming out of the dispatch fund balance. Do we have an agreement on that, everybody?
Yes.
Do we have a motion that that will be paid for out of dispatch fund balance?
And I think we'll have to wait until we see what the number is. Because we don't know. You're, you're anticipating that to be the right bid, but you don't know until you open the bids.
I don't know how many vendors there are for that kind of product.
There's a, there's a bunch of vendors. This wasn't the absolute lowest, but it wasn't, sure wasn't the highest one either. And then they came off another, again, so we know that it won't be any lower than that. Oh, no, no, I don't know that, I'm sorry. No, that'd be, we don't know it'd be any higher than that. So
So I think
May I have the approval to go ahead and order the computers system?
Do we need that?
Because, again, if we're trying to meet the deadline, then no matter who wins, that's gonna be part of that. Now, it's not gonna house, it's gonna house the CAD, but it's also gonna house a bunch of other systems and stuff like that, too. And talking to Paul, he said, no, it's fine, it's a separate purchase, they've just gotta approve spending it out of fund balance.
Had it part of the emergency declaration.
Right.
Do we need to make another emergency declaration for allowing him to spend that out there?
It's all part of the same stuff, but I wouldn't think it's
I would think it would be a good paper trail if we did declare that as emergency as well.
Well, when you say CAD system, is that server not part of that CAD system?
No, that's not part of the bid system.
Then yeah, I think probably clarify it.
Just to be clear on it. Do we, do you have any idea that that might go over the $50,000 bid?
No, on the, on the server? No, no, it's 13, it's, it's included here, it's 13,265,104. I'd just like the permission to spend fund balance money to do it.
And regardless of the bid, this will still work with whoever gets it.
Correct.
We have a motion then to clarify within that emergency declaration that this is also funds available for the server ancillary computer systems that go along with the server in preparation for the CAD. How's that sound?
And pay from fund balance.
And pay from fund, dispatch fund balance. Can we have a motion of that effect?
Yes, sir.
All right. Did that cover everything?
I believe so.
Covers it on the paperwork?
Signing, you're good.
I've got some paperwork for the bids ready to go. Loretta will probably want permission to go ahead and pay that bill.
It's a good idea.
Go ahead and pay what bill?
On the servers, when they get here.
Yeah, it's actually gonna be, I mean, that'd be great if y'all wanna set that permission now, go ahead and, you know, get it over with and done. But it'll take, he's gotta order it in, that's, that's why I'm asking for it to be, to go ahead and do it, because he's gotta order that in, he's gotta go install it, he's gotta set everything up, and that's before, you know, all that needs to be happening in the meantime.
So can we like, I have a motion by Maxwell, second by Raines, to declare an emergency for the server and pay out of dispatch fund balance and allow auditor to pay up on receipt?
Any modus operandi, motion to that, okay.
Y'all good with that?
Now then for the vote, I don't think we've gotten that part of it.
We have not, no.
All in favor, say aye? Aye as well.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, this is a, this is gonna be pretty amazing for the county. We've already been meeting with the chiefs and, and they're already talking about, you know, ways that they can tie in and, I mean, this is light years ahead and
We can put the spiral notebooks in like a museum for dispatch.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put them down for posterity, but this is, this is a good thing for the county and thank y'all very much.
All right, all right, does anything else to add to us on that?
Not on that.
Okay, and item number 10, 911 update, dispatch update.
I'll keep it brief, you know, we had problems with cameras interfering. It turned out to be the power supply, somehow we replaced the power supply, we've got the cameras back up and going and operational now. Pat's retirement is, she has already worked her last shift, but her retirement is today from 3:00 to 5:00 at the Judge Bailey Room, if anybody wants to come, you're more than welcome to. So that's really all I've got on dispatch for right now.
Loretta needs to declare that they are separate emergencies, is that correct?
Well, that's what we did.
Yeah, you declared them two sentences.
That's what we did, yep. Loretta's multitasking this morning?
Yes.
Okay, does anything else on any of that?
No.
All right, good deal.
Thank you very much, guys.
Item number 11 is discuss and consider data preservation, preservation solutions contract. Tessa Coverhouse, come on down. How are you this morning?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Good morning. How are you? Good.
Okay, we've got a contract here from DPS Data Preservation Solutions.
I'm just working towards my preservation, restoration, I'm trying to get some of that rolling. You have a whole packet, just for your information, explaining how they do it, their whole process. But we're gonna send them in our, we'll pack them up in our plastic waterproof tubs and send them that, that way. And then they'll send them back that way. But upon request, they'll send us, like if we have a request that's, while they have the records, if someone requests a record that they have, they'll immediately scan it and send it to us with no problem. So at least that won't hold up anything on our end. And then after they're done, the neat thing is, because to put it into the net data system, it's, one, costly, it'll cost me at least two grand or more. But it's taking at least, when I talked to Lance, he said they're waiting on net data. They're a two-year wait to get these records into the case management system anyway. So I'm not even gonna bother for that. They have is an online portal where I can access the records at any time as well. So that's part of the fee for that. And then they'll also be put on a hard drive as a backup, so.
They're physically gonna take the records with them to a secure location and start scanning them?
Yes, and they'll preserve them. We're gonna start with everything that's in the basement, and your list here is showing everything in the basement. Just in the civil room, that's not including, including my criminal room, yes, sir. So that spreadsheet you have is explaining all the cases. These are pretty, these are guestimates, because they don't know until they actually physically open the file and count every page. But he said they try to guess high, so that the price is always lower and not higher. But this is, if we did the entire basement, civil room, it would be $244,000.
That's not what you're asking for today.
That's not what I'm asking for today. What I have is 15,000 and I'm just gonna work my way through and slowly but surely get there. So I have 15,000 in the record preservation fund, and so I'm gonna use that money to preserve these records. And then I'll do some more next year, so. And I think that gets me about four rows. So I think he said four complete rows of how our shelving is down there, so.
All right, gentlemen, questions or comments on this contract with DPS? And did you want to be allowed to sign it yourself, or did you?
Yes, sir, I can, it's just very basic.
I didn't see any issue with it when I reviewed it.
No, sir.
Didn't see any kind of problems.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I will sign it and send it to him.
Questions or comments on number 11 about the DPS contract? All right, can we have a motion then to enter into that agreement with data preservation solutions for the district clerk and allow an expenditure of up to 15,000 from record preservation? And allow Tessa Coverhouse to sign the contract? I'm waiting for Kathy to call, because she's fast, but not that fast.
Go ahead.
All right, we've got a motion made, do we have a second?
Thank you, thank you.
Motion made, seconded, all in favor, say aye? And opposed, same sign?
Do you want one of these signed right now?
Yes, if you don't mind, I'll let you sign mine and then when DPS signs, will you get me a
I will, can we just email it to you like I did last time?
Be great.
Wish they'd change her name, I keep thinking DPS.
I know, I know, I have to clarify every time I say something, especially in our office.
They could be DSP Data Services Preservation.
Catches your attention though.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Item number 12 is discuss, consider waiving Eastern County Personnel Policy Section 8.07, paid time off policy and allow payment of 100% PTO leave accrual for resigning Deputy District Clerk Diane Crabtree. And Ms. Coverhouse, tell us what you
Diane is leaving us and going to the Court of Appeals, better pay. But I, I have a full week this week of criminal court, civil court, juvenile court, got it all. And with her leaving would put us behind before she, before I even, I'm, I'm sure I'm gonna be shorthanded anyway. But if, I pray that you can give her, one, it's, it's time that she's earned, it's not time that, that hasn't, I mean, she would've just been given. But if I could keep her this week so that she doesn't, she doesn't have to use any of her time, if I can use it, and then that way we're not shorthanded or behind before she's even gone, so.
Were you planning to let her leave a little early to work up, use through her PTO, that was a plan? And now you want her to stay working through this last week?
Well, there was never a plan, because she got it and she was, I mean, she gave it two weeks' notice, so there was never a plan. But it just fell to where it's a full day, a full week of court, and, and I mean, being in summer, usually it's, it's a little slower, but not this summer because of the pandemic. But I pray that if you, I mean, if you don't raise salaries or hourly pay, I ask that you give her the hours that she's earned and pay her for those.
So our typical employment policy, I think, is we pay half of PTO, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
But I, I can't afford to lose her this week, I need her to work.
How much time is it?
I think it's like 60 something hours, 70 maybe.
Well, if we do that for one, gentlemen, we kinda open up the door.
What are you gonna do if we don't do it?
I hope she doesn't take off and then use the rest of her time that she's earned, so I just, I don't, I don't think they're I don't think they're paid for what they're worth, so I ask that you give her the time that she's earned. It's not that she abused it and taken the time off every time she's had an hour or two. I mean, and when you're an employee, you need to build it up in case, at least a week in case you are sick or a family member's out, but I mean, as, as good, as good of an employee as she is and the great job that she's done, I ask that you give her what she's earned.
Well, I understand that and agree, but if, again, if we do this for one person, I mean, that's the whole idea of having that plan in place. And I know, I fully understand it, lady shorthand if she decides to go ahead and leave. I don't know, gentlemen, what do y'all think? We don't typically do that, we might have done that. Robert and Kathy, can you remember?
I don't know that we've done that, since we changed policies.
I don't remember ever doing that.
We've paid it out to 100% of the comp time, we just wanted to try to burn off the comp time. Does she have the comp time built up?
No, we don't ever. We don't ever get comp time, we try to keep that down to a minimum.
When we changed it all over to the PTO time, those people were abusing the sick time.
Loretta asked me to remind you that it was done for a DA employee once before when Russ asked for Amanda. And it was approved.
Is that county pay? Or do they get paid by state?
No, it's county pay, it'd be Amanda, same as Brenda Miller's position there.
Gotcha.
I believe that's right.
Jody's. Jody's position.
Jody's position, yeah, right.
Yes. I think they were having Yes. And I think they were having a big court case that week or the next two weeks. Um.
All I gotta say is we do it again. I didn't, I don't remember doing it that time. We might as well change policy.
There's.
Cause there's no reason in having it and then.
And then having a special exemption every time that it comes up.
Yeah.
Well, it's kind of, I don't know the situation and what issues y'all had with it, but I mean, in my office, it's not abused. So I haven't had that problem. But the girls have earned their time and, and I mean, they've worked and they have, I'm, I just, I believe.
The issue really is you needed to stay there this, this next week.
I need her this week, yes.
To keep the thinking going.
Cause then there are, there's people off that have already been off because of, you know, what's been planned a month or two ago before summer even got here. So it's.
But really, that was her decision to decide to go to work for somebody else.
It's because they pay way more, so.
I understand that, Tessa, but it's her decision to, to quit the county and separate and go to work somewhere else, so. I don't, I'm just talking for myself, so. What does anybody else think about it?
I do know that we have one employee, uh, I believe with the jail, that is, has given his notice. And I mean, we're fixing to start paying out for everybody if we do one.
Well, and you know, if they're gonna lose half their PTO pay, it might make them wanna stay in a little longer and do their full time.
Well, the other, the other side of that is, is even if we pay it off, it's coming out of your budget. So you can't replace her for the 70 hours. It's not a special fund. It's still, you're still losing somebody for that amount of time.
So you wouldn't be able to hire anybody.
Yeah, you wouldn't be able to replace her for the, until the 70 hours were burned.
That would push your replacement time further down because there wouldn't be the money in there to do it with.
Yeah, you wouldn't have that money.
It comes out of your, it'd come out of your department funding.
Yeah.
And it can't be replaced with any of my other funding. I moved around to.
Records management or any of that? I don't think so.
I mean, just out of my general fund.
Yeah.
Doing that. You mean like from office equipment moving into salaries? That would take commissioners' support.
Yeah.
Do, you would, you may not, you might run short of that line item. If you move that line item from office equipment, furniture, whatever, computer, into payroll, and then you've got to get through July, August, September. You've got three more months to get through it. You might run short in there.
Yeah, it's just, I'd have to look at it and see.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause you gotta realize that's not just one line either. It's the whole list of everything.
If you're gonna need, what'd you say, 60 hours?
There's, yeah, between 60 and 70 hours. I don't remember the exact hour.
Ballpark, how much money are we talking about?
Well, she gets paid 1271 an hour, so.
That's a thousand dollars, something like that.
Yeah.
So do you think you have that much even left anywhere in your budget?
I'd have, I could look.
You'd have to do, I mean, retirement and everything.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get kind of a broad picture.
Health insurance, everything. You don't know if you'd have that?
I'd have to go look. I mean, I, I think I would, I would, but.
Let's, let's cross over. Do we want to cross over the part about do we want to allow being paid out 100% for PTO?
I, I'd say, I think if we did, uh, this time, we might just change policy so that everybody knows what's coming. Cause doing it for one's not gonna be any less fair than doing it for everybody else. So, I mean, that's, that's it. I, I, I think if we're gonna do it, and I'm, I'm not saying one way or another, if we do it, I think we need to change the policy reflect. That's the way it's gonna be.
So then the policy would have to change like it is for comp to pay out 100% of PTO.
100% of the time, yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
Some PTO is over, you know, 140, so.
We can't do that.
So if they quit, then that's gonna wreck the budget of whoever's obviously worked for it.
Especially if it's 140.
The PTO was set at 50%, so you wouldn't.
Yeah, you wouldn't do that.
If this happened at September, it wouldn't be able, wouldn't be funded, you know, or even August probably. Cause you've already spent your money in the year.
So you think that's right? If we had to do that, change it?
What, if what's right, like?
What Robert's saying.
Change the.
You understand what's gonna happen.
Right, I understand. And I'm a small department compared to like the jail or, you know, that's, that's gonna be an issue for the jail or them. But yeah, I mean, I see your issues, but. I'm not saying there's not good and bad to both.
Well, it's, it's good of you to ask for her.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I, right.
And elected official, so.
I wanna do what I can to get on everything I have.
She shouldn't quit. She shouldn't quit.
Well, I mean.
Uh, don't go back to that.
Well, you know, it's true. So you should pay more. There's no, I can't keep an employee. I'm doing this every hour, every, every year, every year and a half, so. I get a good one and they go, so.
Does anybody wanna make a motion that we pay?
She has 61.5 hours PTO.
61.5? It, it'll wind up being over a thousand with the payroll and the associated.
She's still learning PTO.
And the associated items that come out of payroll. Let's see if anybody wants to make a motion that we change from 50% to 100% on this one incident and then have to look at the policy again.
Well, waive it. You don't wanna change the policy. It's not on the agenda.
Well.
Okay.
Way that, way that.
Set the parameters of, the reason for changing it. I mean, to me, I mean, there's got to be some type of rule to change for one person. I mean, I've, I know of one person that's given notice. I mean, are we going to have to go through this to pay him or?
I think it's up to the department has because they know their employee. They know how loyal they are. They know their work ethics. I mean.
I wouldn't be asking for someone who wasn't.
Yeah, that took advantage.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, sure. Well, then you wanna get control of that anyway internally before it gets to the issue.
Sure.
Does anybody wanna make a motion that we pay, uh, we waive the personnel policy this time and pay 100% of PTO to Diane Crabtree? Anybody wanna make that motion? Anybody? And I don't, I don't either, so we're not gonna do it this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tessa. Sorry.
You have a good day.
Sometimes we just have to say no.
I understand.
Ms. Tessa, if you do, she does leave or whatever, I think Judge will come down there and help you with that.
I will take you up on that.
Or Commissioner Wilson, but he's gotta wear long pants, so.
Oh, you do?
Can't wear those.
Now, I will vouch for Judge Fields. When we were short, he did come in and help my office before.
Yeah.
What, whatever, we gotta make it work.
Hey, I'll take any of you.
When Donnie's gone.
Keep y'all busy.
I don't know about Ronnie and them, cause they don't need to come over. Yeah.
I don't mind helping. I haul trash out of the building, whatever we need to do.
Me too. I'm gonna get a trash hawter.
Thank y'all.
Pick up load a day comes out of this building. I pick up load a day. This building and that, crazy.
It's not from my office.
All right. I'm not going there. Item 13, discuss, consider annual road report from each county commissioner. And I've got the report from precinct four, been notarized, signed by everybody. Precinct one, precinct two, do we have precinct three?
Three shouldn't be in there. You lose it. It's not in there, Judge. Don't look for it.
I have precincts two and four.
I have precinct one, two, and four.
I should have mine before the meeting is over, okay?
Really?
You have one for me.
Well, it's gotta be, uh, hard copied and notarized unless you wanna, it's gotta be, you gotta sign it and it's gotta be notarized.
Yeah.
If you don't wanna.
No problem.
Okay. All right, so the ones that we have right now, uh, can we have a motion then to accept, to accept in annual road reports from precinct one, precinct two, and precinct four?
Yes, sir. Certainly.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign? All right, so we're waiting on precinct three. And when I get all those in, then I will take that to, uh, grand jury.
I have precinct one. I need precinct one. And then once we get them in, I'll get you a certified copy for grand jury.
Like we do every year.
Have they changed that law? I've read a little bit about it coming up.
Not that I heard of.
The only thing they changed was it's not necessary the, for the grant programs no more.
Gotcha.
They, they changed it saying that it was not, uh.
Contingent.
Yeah, on, on us doing the report.
I do think they messed with it a little bit. Remind everybody, Loretta needs copies of the road reports also.
I left mine down there with you.
Okay. I've got yours right here.
You got hers, okay. You need a copy, some copies right now?
I'll email her and she can shred what she don't want.
Okay. All right, we have all that taken care of. Okay, item number 14 is discuss, considering entering into a lease purchase contract with American National Leasing Company for the purchase of a 2021 Palm H12, I guess that's I. H12 I roller for Roden Bridge Precinct number one. Sonia, you wanna tell us about that or can we do it or?
I have, uh, all I have is just this for you to sign, so you might wanna talk about it.
Okay, so Loretta, under your authority from the last meeting, went out and she had, uh, four, I think, people, four entities that came back with bids. That's in there. American National Leasing Company, Government Capital Company, Government Capital Corporation, excuse me, Kirby Smith Machinery, and Welch State Bank to finance this 2021 roller. And the best deal, after you include all the fees that they're asking for, um, the rate, the final payment, the best deal was with American National Leasing Company. So, Mr. Maxwell, this is yours. Do you have any input on this? You okay with it?
The back documents, Sonia, does Judge not need to sign that, the resolution?
This, um, Loretta has marked where he needs to sign. I think there's only one place that we need to wait until delivery.
But the resolution, we're asked for, for seeing.
That, I do not have, I don't think.
The top one.
And the formal.
She's got three places, a red flag from here. The first one is, I think that is the resolution. No, it's tax and general certificate. And then the next one up is the actual equipment lease application. And then the lease purchase agreement with leasing acceptance.
So y'all don't have the resolution or the formal proposal?
That's what this is. I don't see a resolution here. Do you see a resolution?
Resolution.
Yeah, there's a resolution in fact.
And a formal proposal.
Well, let me see here. Maybe I skipped over it.
It's at the very, very back.
All right, I'll press back and go forward.
It's right after page four.
Well, these are all the other proposals.
Do have it. It is, um.
Ah, there it is. I had you sticking up.
It wasn't flagged.
Several.
Yeah, there we go.
Maybe it was your flag.
It's not flagged.
Well, I, we'll hand this one to everybody. All right, with that, gentlemen, do we have a motion to enter into this agreement with American National Leasing for this 2021 Palm roller? Make the resolution, adopt the resolution, and sign all the documents. And allow me to sign the same.
Yeah, I'm making, I'm second.
I'm waiting for Kathy to get caught up. Motion made, seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye as well. All right, I'm gonna start signing here. And Kathy, if you'll catch all of them, make sure that some are set up to sign for just me and some are set up to sign for all of me. Uh-oh, this says don't sign until, oh, that's the leases, bring it down there.
Yeah, that's the one.
Until it's received, yeah.
Until it's received, yeah.
Well, the resolution is just set up for me to sign, so I guess there's nothing else to sign. It does say, resolution been passed upon a motion made by a board member.
Cringe off. And right.
By vote of, was it 5-0 or?
Uh-huh, yes, sir.
It's effective, this is the 28th. Okay, Kathy, if you'll check all those and there's places on there for you to witness.
Okay.
This one as well.
Oh, he didn't initial it, Judge.
Oh, did, I did not get the initials, no.
He's done all that paperwork up here. Took you to find something, didn't he?
Sold ranches.
They're gonna come to you for payment.
Yeah. Good luck on that one.
You'll be retired and have to make payments on some of the accounts.
Will you have an opening over in precinct two? I'll maybe I could drive a truck or something for a while.
And you'll be smiling driving that roller.
Hey, I can drive a new rover. There you go.
She's making play that one. Give me a part-time. To use the truck, yeah.
Yeah, dude.
And on to you, man, girl. Every time I blow one in my mouth, I tell myself, I'm gonna. I'll just run it once. Next time he says he's a fine cat. Shit, why war? Like I told James, just keep this in mind. If they wear out of 5,000 hours, you guys are gonna have.
Okay, there's the pink slip back there and then the initials.
I'll be gone by then.
Do you want me to sign?
Mine just turned over 500 hours.
Do you want me to sign?
Oh, yeah.
It said. Pressure, low pressure rail fuel system. So fuel.
Why didn't you use it?
The cause. It also said, no, I ain't, I'm on that one. It also had the code for the DPF filters. The diesel particulate filters, $2,000 a piece and there's two of them.
Oh. I thought you already had them replaced.
No, they come on at 5,000 hours. Unless your cat's up there and then they just delete it so they don't replace it before they bring them. What I figured out between the two machines. You can just delete them. They just clear the code on it. Otherwise, they wouldn't need to replace it the last time it was up there. So when it turned 5,000 hours, I said they had 5,046 when you dropped it off.
Yeah.
So what they need replaced before you dropped it off.
Judge, he's a son at my house.
This another one?
Yeah.
Is that pink slip too?
Yeah, they have no backside in there. Yeah, they have no.
Okay. That one's, uh, I'm gonna hand these back to you now and reveal them one more time. Something here I missed?
Uh, the pink slip.
I told him, I said, that's what that code is or something. Just put it on the screen. That's how you figure it out if you're on the computer. No, uh, it never even said a code. It just come up with the warning line, little warning line, at 5,001 hours. He was, he was.
Who wants?
That's mine. Thank you.
Unless you want me to take this one and you take the unsigned one.
This is mine.
This is originally was yours.
I'll just go and do it. That way we'll have multiple originals in case we need them somewhere along the way. Good grief.
We're fixing the places, but that's all.
That's it. That's all we're doing. Spot dropping these places. That's the power lines. Went out to the corner, counted five more places. They broke through, ready. Won't do it tomorrow. Won't do it Wednesday. Once a week.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Places are breaking through.
Good.
All right.
As of now.
Item number 15 is personnel matters.
This report is from June 9th through June 28th. We have one full-time deputy sheriff as the new hire, and there are no employment terminations.
Okay. Anyone else have any personnel reports or personnel matters to discuss? Okay, hearing none. Can we have a motion to accept the report just given?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. Number 16 is budgetary appropriations matters.
We have none.
Have none? None? Circumcision additional revenue?
None.
Emergency amendments?
Uh, those will be done at the next meeting.
Okay. Amendment changes by fund.
Okay. This is.
That's the, that's the report.
Okay.
It'll be a list of department changes.
Item changes.
Yeah, you'll see a department.
I don't have any.
I don't have any.
Okay, none.
That's the one we have, none of.
16, well, okay, and so then now 16D is report of financial condition.
Okay. Uh, this is unreconciled balances as of June 22nd. The combined statement of cash position for general funds. We have, um, tax pull, thirty, $331,049.38. First Financial, $847,263. Texas Bank is $250,000. Shirts Bank is $250,000. Prosperity is $250,000. Tax pull prime is $521,088.86. Uh, total is, uh, I wrote over it and I can't see it.
You also got general class.
Oh, general class.
Five ten. And the checking account balance up at the, up the left-hand side, $3,535,145.67.
Okay, and that totals $6,494,565.38. Roden Bridge, um, has $626,035.44. Then the rest of the funds are listed. A total for all funds on deposit for Eastland County, $11,149,388.39. The combined statement of revenue and expenses for June, this is, um, general fund, uh, revenue, $8,541,621.53. Roden Bridge, revenue is $1,450,457.28. And expenses are $1,063,628.6. The total, uh, all funds. Revenue is $13,174,927.88. With the expenses being $10,565,928.56. Cash receipts and disbursements. Through June 22nd by funded account. Uh, ending balance, general ledger. Am I reading it right? Is it going to be the $6 million?
What are you talking about on page? This one right here, what says cash ending balance, $11,661,000?
Yeah.
And then the next up is going to be the schedule of payments.
General fund, um, is the balance of zero, and then the R and B fund is $300,529.68.
And then we've got the schedule of payments that go through here. Election equipment is basically done. I think that payment's been made, hasn't it?
Yes, it's a zero balance.
That's, that's where the ending, that's where the zero balance is on that. Good. That was five years to get that paid off. Okay, gentlemen, any questions or comments on the, uh, report ending as of June the 22nd? Anyone? All right, hearing no questions or comments, can we have a motion then to accept that report as presented?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign. And that takes us to the investment report, and I did not see one in there. Sonia.
Do not.
So that then takes us to 16F, which is financial reports. I think you had one from Department of Motor Vehicle. You have a report for that.
I have one from the tax collector, DMV.
That's it.
I have two DMVs, actually. Uh, May and Jim.
Those are the ones you have?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't, I don't even have those, so. All right, can we have a motion then to accept those financial reports just made?
Loretta will need copies of those.
Who made the motion?
Made, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. And then Loretta needs copies of those?
They're emailed.
Okay. Still want me to get your copies?
I have, um.
That's them right there.
This right here. Uh, Department of Motor Vehicles. That's all I have. Two.
All right, that's the current thing that we need on financial reports. Number one?
Yes.
All right, 17 is bills, claims, and accounts. And Sonia, you've got a package over there. Let's see what you've got.
This is Christina's.
One, two. Where are we? And Amber, are you making the presentation today?
No, I'm just here to listen.
Okay, all right, good deal.
I don't know nothing about nothing.
You do know something about something. You work next door, so, okay, well.
There are five sets of bills. Uh, the first one is June 14th through 23rd, which is health reimbursement for employees.
Okay.
The second is June 25th, all payroll payables, except workers' comp and unemployment. The third one is June 25th, payroll gross wages. The fourth is the June 28th payables. Uh, Christina said to bring attention to Fund 40 expenditures on page 11.
Fund 40 is, is that Justice Court? What is that? Okay.
Justice Court. And then Fund 55 expenditures on page 17. Uh, she noted that these expenditures need to be approved before the bills are approved.
Fund 50 is, or 55?
It's my records management.
Okay.
And that has already been approved in court at a prior meeting. Mine has.
Okay. So all we need to specifically approve is Justice Court technology fee. Was that, is that the end of her notes?
I've got one more. Uh, that was the end of the notes on that section.
All right, gentlemen, any questions or comments on these five sets of bills claiming the accounts to be paid? I'll get to it. I know where you're going with it.
What?
All right. To include.
Oh.
Justice Court technology expenditure of $221.75 of a Fund 40. All right, all in favor? Do we have a motion?
No.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor to pay, including Justice Court technology? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. We've been doing this long enough. When you start to stall, I go, okay, wait a minute, wait a minute. Pump the brakes. Where are we here on this deal?
Loretta just sent a note, said JP Technology previously approved, so.
Oh, was it?
She said it was.
Oh, you approved it again.
That's right. It's double blessed.
Double, double blessing, yes.
Okay, people, it's starting on trouble.
I'm not starting, no, I'm not. You're silent too slow.
Starting trouble over here.
Who? It's Monday, and she's working for it. What are you expecting?
You don't.
Well, she ain't supposed to, Robert, she doesn't even. She's not an hour term. They ain't buying too much. What he's going to.
Happened to him.
Where we going?
All right, next up is item number 18, and last item on here is discuss, consider the 2021, 2022 budget. Sonia brings to us a letter from Loretta about her not being able to be here today, and this is version two of our document.
You need to send me a text so I know which number that I've got for you to do. Cause I've got like three phone numbers for you to say Jason Wager in my phone. I don't know which one. And I started just to call them all to figure out which one. Well, no, I don't want to talk to that many people.
I noticed with the.
All others you can release. Okay.
What, Jen? I noticed with the published salaries and y'all don't find any takers for that LRC.
We tried to. We tried to.
Robert, I need to take a break and go send that bid notice in.
Right now? There ain't no way we can do that.
I have to do it before, yeah. I'm doing it.
I'll make, I'll make a motion. We take a short reset.
Thank you.
Everyone?